All right. Good morning. We'll go ahead and call the Tepiqiah County Commissioners Meeting to Order. If you'll please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Please excuse the noise outside today. We call that progress. All right. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes. We also have an amended set of meeting or of minutes.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the amended Board of Meetings Commissioners Meeting Minutes dated 6/3 and the Board of Commissioners Register Meeting dated 6/17.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve those sets of minutes. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes. Accounts payable.
Mr. President, I'd like to recommend the claims from June 20 through July 1, 2024, be approved without exception.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes. Payroll.
Mr. President, I'd also like to recommend the payroll dated June 21, 2024, be approved without exception.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That passes. All right. Highway Department. Stu.
Good morning. Just have two major items. The first is a consultant design services amendment, number two, with structure point engineering for County Road 500 East Phase Two includes some off-site drainage work that's come in and developed our coordination. It's in the amount of $5,764.
Mr. President, move to approve this amendment, too?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes.
Our second item is acceptance of the Stonehenge subdivision, Phase Five. This includes Amesbury Court, Amesbury Drive, and Derington Court for a total of 0.211 miles. We also have a maintenance bond for that same section in the amount of $37,104.
Mr. President, I'd move for the acceptance of the streets as outlined and the approval of the maintenance bond.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We have a couple of items from Area Plan Commission.
Mr. President, I move that we hear ordinance 20-24-08-CM, Uso Amendment Number 112.
Second.
Okay. The ordinance you have before you was the concept which was originally requested by the City of West Lafayette Calman Council to provide for restrictions of the transient guest house, which is where the owner of the property is not present and it is purely rented in a short-term basis, less than 30 days, and in four zones. So there are presently 17 zones where this use is permitted, and this ordinance would reduce that number by four. So that would leave 13 zones available for this use either by special exception to the BZI or by right. So that would, for the county's purposes, that would include every agricultural zone, would not be restricted in this manner. Presently, the transient guest house is available in all ag zones by special exception and the rural estate zone by special exception. That would continue. So this would only impact the R1, R1A, R1B, and R1U zones. So that is this ordinance. After it went through ordinance committee and the Plan Commission, there was interest in other localities to sort of piggyback on what West Lafayette requested, most notably City of Lafayette. And so, sort of in the spirit of just democracy, we decided to advance this to just all legislative bodies, let them individually debate it amongst themselves and see what was best for them. We did hear back from, I believe, two of the towns. They were interested in kind of debating it, and so they were happy to have it passed along to them. So we figure what was good for one should be good for all. So that's why it's in front of you today. So be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. And Ryan, I'm sorry, you said there it would still be permitted in 13 zones.
Correct.
And how many of those would be, would still require a special exception?
It would be by special exception in all of the A zones, so A, AA, AW.
Okay.
RE by special exception, the R2 and R2U zones by special exception, and the rest should be by right, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah.
And would that include some commercial? That would include?
Yes, like the central business zone, downtown Lafayette, that's by right.
Okay.
Same thing with central business, West Lafayette, that would be by right.
Okay.
And then there are some others.
No, sir.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, you know, when we were hearing this at ordinance, obviously there was a lot of discussion. And I know the mayor of Lafayette expressed, you know, some concern about, and that's why they're considering it, that they didn't, you know, they didn't want their neighborhoods to face the same problems that West Lafayette's dealing with. And I think if we don't act on it, I think that's, and Lafayette does, it's just going to drive that into our subdivisions in the near, in the area outside of both cities of Lafayette. So I'm going to be supporting that. But I'd like to hear from anybody from the public who might have comments in regard to this.
Morning.
Good morning.
My name's Jaime Ortiz. I'm the Vice Chair of the Libertarian Party of Tepiqiah. I have a question. Where does the government get the authority to tell people what to do with their property? Can anyone tell me why you guys are telling property owners what to do with their houses?
I mean, you, I mean APC has the authority to, you know, hear rezones and hear ordinances in regard to what can be done with properties.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm.
Is that what this country was founded on?
Yeah.
Is that in the constitution, state constitution?
Do you?
I find it disgusting that there's three Republicans that are supposed to be for small government even entertaining this.
Do you have something to state in regard to this particular request?
Yeah, I don't think that it should be passed. I don't think the government at any level, any bureaucrat should be telling homeowners what to do with their property. Like, I get that there's a housing shortage, but I think the solution to that is getting rid of the zoning ordinances that restrict people from building houses.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Sure.
Hi, I'm Doug Trader. Question, how are you going to regulate this? As far as, first of all, there's a lot of existing Airbnbs out there. The ones that are existing, are they grandfathered in?
Right.
How do you know which ones are there already?
So if they're, basically it'll be done like any other rezone or any other zoning complaint. If a neighbor complains, then I'll go through that complaint process. And, you know, if they have not gone through the process, then they would be, you know.
No, I understand that. So like in the city of West Lafayette, they've had a rental inspections and programs, so they know who's had them for a long time. The county and the city of Lafayette, I haven't, I don't know how they know where they are and how long they've been around. For instance, I, we have one, and we've had it for, I don't know, six, seven years. And at the time that we did it, there was no requirements for those. So how do you guys know which ones have been around?
If they're grandfathered, well, you could document that by your advertisement.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yeah.
How?
Because you could, you could document.
I guess I don't want somebody coming around saying, "Well, you can't have it." Well, I've had that for eight years, seven years, whatever it, whatever it was.
Yeah, because Airbnb or VRBO, they all, you know, obviously, they're on the website unless it is such.
Correct. Okay. All right. That's all I need. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Ryan, I got a question. Are there other communities out there doing this exact same thing, restricting where supposedly they can be and not be? I mean, I'm going to say Kokomo or some, you know, or similar-sized communities.
Yeah, other localities that have had ordinances that came into effect before the state intervened. They all have grandfathered situations where these uses are allowed in certain zones and not in other zones. So it's not an uncommon situation that we're facing.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, sir.
Okay. Jennifer?
Brown.
Yes.
Murtaugh.
Yes.
Byers.
Yes.
Ordinance 2024-08-CM passes three to zero.
All right. Okay. For the next rezone, Racetrack Petroleum, they, the petitioner has requested that this item be reset for the, our Commissioners Meeting on July 15.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to continue that till the 15th. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That passes. Okay. And then we have a subdivision variance.
Yes, this variance is to request a reduction in the required right-of-way per the thoroughfare plan, which is a function of the subdivision ordinance, to reduce it from 65 to 60. It's my understanding County Highway is fine with this adjustment, and that's fine by me. So be happy to answer any questions.
And Stu, it's, obviously you've reviewed this.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's on 400 South. It's on the south side of the property. That is a segment that in Phase Three will move to the south anyway. So any amount of taking will be excess right-of-way.
And does it involve just that? Is it just the corner that's involved?
Just that corner, yeah.
Just that one corner? Okay.
It's just that side. This, the property is on 500 and 400, and it's the 400 side that the variance is for.
Okay. All right. All right. Any further questions?
No, sir.
Okay.
Mr. President, I move that we approve subdivision variance S-5204 for Blue Fox subdivision.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes. All right. Next, we have an ordinance in regard to regulation of campaign materials at polling sites.
Mr. President, I move that we approve ordinance number 2020-24-10-CM, regulation of campaign materials.
Second.
Mr. Smith, you're up.
I left my upstairs corners to come down and talk to you. So we're very fortunate in this county, as I say every year at training time for the poll workers, and to have some great community citizens. We have great gracious hosts who accommodate tens of thousands of voters, all at sites we don't pay for, but they're open to us out of goodwill and civic-mindedness. When I started 42 years ago in 1982, we had 52,000 registered voters. As of this morning, we had nearly 115,000. So these decades have seen great growth in voters and, of course, proliferation in campaign material. We're proposing this ordinance to get out in front of some issues that have popped up around this county and our great state. We've had some near misses here recently in Tepiqiah County with some water lines, with people driving stakes to hold up their signage. And we've had a problem over in West Lafayette where we obscured a baby safe drop box because of the immense amount and size of the signage. And around the state, I could give you a few examples. There was an irrigation line punctured in Lake County. A pool fell through a window in Vanderburg County from a sign that was eight feet tall. A water line was hit on the courthouse square of Noblesville in Hamilton County. We want to avoid these kinds of things. So the Board of Elections is bringing this ordinance to you to get out in front of this burgeoning issue and reduce the risk for the county. This ordinance, I believe, will accomplish four things: prevent some public safety issues, protect property, promote a good voter experience, and provide for a level playing field among candidates. I want to thank Hamilton County's clerk, Kathy Williams, Lake County's Elections Director, Leah Angerman, Mr. Von der Heid, our chairman and our county attorney for their advice in drafting this ordinance. The Board of Elections authorized me to state on their behalf that they unanimously endorsed and recommend this ordinance. I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
If I just add a little bit to what Mike said. So this regulates campaign material primarily directed at signs. As Mike mentioned, there's been sort of a, I think they're trying to address sort of an arms race in terms of size and number, which potentially impacts safety, potentially discourages property owners from allowing you to use their facilities as polling sites. And so, you know, normally, like, political speech is very much protected, but there are, case law gives you some authority to regulate some of these things. And we picked the 100-foot zone mainly because there's a case that sort of says that's, that's okay. The further you get away from the polling site, the more tenuous your ability to regulate political speech is. So there's no magic to 100 feet, but I think that's well within your power based on what the Supreme Court said on these things. And so it applies to a zone extending from a polling site to 100 feet from the entrance to the facility in which the site is located. Can't place campaign material more than 24 hours before, and you have to remove it 24 hours after. Not more than the two signs. It can't be placed or affixed using wood, metal, or by any means that's going to cause damage. The Board of Elections is given power to enforce it. They can remove the material that's in violation or order the candidate or political action committee to remove it as provisions for storage and disposal of those signs that have been removed and a process for fines imposed by the Board of Elections. So that's the crash course.
And?
And this is first reading, so you'd have to go for it, do it on second reading as well.
And Mike, how will campaigns then receive a letter, email on rules?
We send an educational reminder at the beginning of every election season, usually about 60 to 90 days ahead of time. And that's why we're trying to get on board this quick, so we can educate the candidates and the hosts and our election workers about this drive we have to put this ordinance on the books. So people are given the heads up ahead of time. We both do mailings and emails to folks to educate them. And of course, you know, this will be on our webpage as well, and we'll probably try to reach out with Juan to get it through on social media also. So we, you know, we do intend on, you know, we're not, we're not trying to be hardcore about this, but we want to make this an educational process. But then, you know, we do have a mechanism if we have some flagrant scofflaws, folks that don't want to, to play ball. You know, this protects, you know, there is balance to, like Doug says, you know, we're not trying to regulate free speech, but we're trying to have a clean voting experience. Indiana State Statute also does provide for a public safety exception to any kind of regulation of campaign material. And I definitely think that water lines and things like that and baby safe drop boxes meet that requirement under Indiana Code also, besides Burson v. Freeman, the Supreme Court case that Mr. Madison has represented to you as saying that it's allowable to regulate a material within 100 foot of a polling site.
And Mike, we've always had, obviously, the state law that requires that, that camp, that folks campaigning have to-
Commonly known as the chute.
The chute.
Fifty feet from the-
Have to be 50 feet from the chute. So this is being, this is totally driven by, by complaints that we received in the most recent election, or have there been, have there been sprinkling of complaints even beyond that?
Yeah, complaints, both complaints and observations about some, some very serious damages happened in other localities that the county was on the hook for, their county, not ours, you know. So of course, you know, we do carry liability insurance for our voting sites. We issue riders every, to everybody at that appropriate time. But that, you know, down, down the road could impact your rates. Also impacts, as Mr. Madison mentioned, the willingness of folks. You know, it was just 16 years ago that we got rid of the last place we were paying at. Krista Coffey, our clerk then, finally got us all, all the way out of that. And that's because of the goodwill that our hosts extend to us, and we don't want to abuse that either. You know, we want to make sure that we're, we're being good guests. And they serve tens of thousands of our, of our voters. And we want to make sure that we can continue in our relationships, because we have some good, strong relationships. But we've had some complaints from our hosts about some damage or near damage. Frightened them a little bit.
So a candidate who's inclined to put 10 signs up, as long as they don't do it within the 50 and the 100 feet-
Yeah, they'd just be subject to other things like right-of-way and whatever other, you know, private property is private property. I mean, we have complaints about that every cycle, too, where folks put things where they, that it's not public. So, but yeah, those things, we're not trying to regulate with this ordinance. This is, that's outside of the purview of the Board of Elections. Something with, like the highway, that's, whoever owns that or who has control over the highway or street is responsible for that. Private property owners have their own recourse. We're not trying to touch that. We're just trying to make that bubble around our polling sites.
Appreciate your work on this.
Thank you, sir.
Is there any public comment in regard to this? All right. Jennifer?
Byers.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Murtaugh?
Yes.
Ordinance 2024-10-CM passes three to zero on first reading.
Okay. And then that will be heard on second reading at our July 15 meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, Jennifer, professional services agreement with Oracle.
Yes, I'm asking to replace our existing financial system for the county from what is called One Solution to an Oracle product called NetSuite for Government. We had a small committee gather and see some demonstrations. And while we would have liked to incorporate timekeeping and payroll, I know Sadie went a different route with that for now. And so the savings of her payroll system and HR system offsets the increase of this system. It's basically a wash for our annual support. Did have some implementation fee appropriation approved by the council at the last meeting. And so I would ask that you approve the main contract for this Oracle product.
Mr. President, I would move that we approve both the professional, I guess it would just be the professional services agreement with Oracle Americas outlined by the auditor.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Sheriff Goldsmith?
Salary statement.
I have one other item.
Salary statement.
Oh, I'm sorry. 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 Not yet.
It'll be brief. Rather than make copies, I distributed all of the proposed 2025 salary statements sent through email to you prior to the meeting starting. So those are in order and available for your review.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
Good morning. So what we have is we have unused equipment. This is a Taser X26P that we no longer use. Dayton Police Department could use this. I think it's a good gesture to help a smaller agency get resources that we don't use anymore. And that's what we're asking, just to be able to donate one to them.
Okay. And do we have to do that in form of a resolution or anything, or is it just minutes?
I think it's normally a resolution. So if you want to, I can, I can write it up for you to sign it. But if you want to move to adopt a resolution authorizing the donation of the Taser to the town of Dayton, then that's all you would need.
Okay.
So moved.
Second. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Is there also a resolution required from-
Yeah, Dayton will have to adopt a similar one.
Yeah.
So I'll just write it up as simple as what, what I just said there. And it'll be, do we know what resolution number? We'll get the next resolution number, and that motion authorizes you to sign it when I get it to you. And then we'll get that to Dayton, and they can adopt the same.
Okay. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Community corrections keynote.
Good morning. Thank you. So we are requesting a contract signed with the Arts Federation to allow our participants to participate in the art exhibition. This is Lauren. She is the life's course, life skills coordinator, and she was the one that had asked about it. So I was going to let her provide a little information.
Good morning. So we feel like this partnership with Arts Federation would be really helpful for participants. They'd be able to contribute their own art. And I'd love to read you the premise that we came up with, if that'd be okay. It's called Reimagined. Inspired by a participant who took the Newlywellness Center logo of Corrections and put his own spin on it, we find ourselves captivated by one solitary word, Reimagined. In the dayroom, you could find him perched over a tee-shirt with fabric markers and Sharpies, tirelessly pouring himself into his canvas with what he was allowed to have. Frustrated with his limitations on what he was able to use to draw, yet he still created art. Reimagined is resourcefulness, taking what already exists and what resources you have and making something new. And perhaps even more profound, Reimagined is taking who you are as a human being and all you have within yourself, your talents, your dreams, your weaknesses, your mistakes, your trauma, and crafting your destiny into your own creation. These are artists. These are stories.
So with that, we would ask that if you would graciously sign the contract to allow our participants to put their art that they create when they're with us in the exhibition.
Then the exhibition is at TAF?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. President, I move that we approve this contract with the Arts Federation.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve, approve this agreement. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes. Thank you. All right. Next, we have appointment to the Tepiqiah County Building Commissioner. So obviously, we are, Mr. Wolf is leaving us at the end of this month. So we wish him the very best in retirement. And would like to welcome Bill Robinett as the new Building Commissioner effective April 1, or August 1, I'm sorry. So with-
Giving applause on building?
Yeah. And April Fools. I will entertain a motion.
Well, I asked Mike if we picked the right person, and he hasn't answered me yet. So.
I think you're okay.
All right.
Mr. President, I would move for appointment of Bill Robinett as our Building Commissioner effective August 1, 2024.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes. All right. And then we have a update from the Health Department on the 24, 2024 Community Baby Shower.
Good morning.
I think he's going to pull up a slideshow, maybe. Perfect. Is it just going to run on the loop? Awesome. Okay. So as you can imagine, with my role as the Fetal and Infant Mortality Review Director, I don't often have positive news to deliver, but I have some today. I'm really proud of how our community baby shower went this year and hopefully will continue to go. So I have a slideshow here to show you guys, and I'm just going to touch on some of the highlights. lots of vendors reach out ahead of time, volunteers, which is really neat, not just at the Health Department, but out in the community that want to be a part of the event. And we had tons of community as well as corporate sponsorships this year. And with the success of our program, we've received additional grant funding to really make this a success. Overall, we were able to serve 79 families despite the cruddy weather that day, so we were happy with that turnout. We focused a lot of our outreach on low-income and minority populations because we know that they are at a significantly increased risk for stillbirth and infant death. And that worked very well because over 50% of those who attended were of minority populations, and 75% were on Medicaid or Medicaid supplement. So we know that our resources and education and materials were getting into the hands of those who needed it the absolute most. We offered a vendor fair, there's some pictures of it there, with almost 40 maternal and child health and social service vendors. So they helped families get in contact with not only prenatal and pediatric services, but met those social needs like housing, insurance, transportation, food, et cetera. Then families joined in on an education session, and we taught on topics that we identified during our femur meetings as priority to get prevention initiatives out to the community. So those were fetal movement monitoring through Count the Kicks, post-birth warning signs, safe sleep, and car seat safety. And we had volunteers from IU and Franciscan provide that information, and a local mom came and spoke about the loss of her son Tanner to really put some meaning behind that education, which was very impactful. After families participated in the education session, they could shop at our baby store and join in on raffles. Our baby store was provided by community corrections staff and participants. That's a partnership that we've had for the last three years, where participants can bring in items, and in exchange, they get day passes to go spend time with their families. So it's a really neat, you know, full circle there. IU Health also donated these wonderful diaper bags that were packed with little goodies. We had a local sorority that gave us diapers and wipes, so every family got a pack of those. And we put together a femur, femur resource bag with community resources as well as our educational materials. And Franciscan gave us sacks and magnets to also provide to families. We also, on the way out, every family was given the opportunity to have their choice of a crib and car seat, or crib and mattress combo, or a car seat and base combo, because we know that providing the education and then using those items as they're instructed can help prevent accidents and injuries. So pictures of the team as well, because I absolutely could not have done it without them. Thank you, Jeff, for driving the forklift. We had hundreds of items that made it from our building over to the fairgrounds, and I could not have done it without them. Overall, very positive uplifting event. I'm glad to share some happy news. It's like the highlight of my year, so thank you. If anyone would like to get involved in any capacity, there is my info up there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sounds like a great event. Any unfinished or new business?
No, sir.
No? All right. Reports on file. We have a report from the Building Commission, Old Bash River Heritage Corridor Commission, and Waits and Measures, and those will be on file in the commissioner's office. Public comment?